All right, so need for executive. I know, so.
Reporting in progress.
Um, I have one for personnel and then you have contracts?
I do.
Anybody else have anything? Okay. Do we have a motion to go into executive?
We'll move. Second?
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, here he is. Hey there. Just in time. Um, all right, any need to amend the agenda? I had one thing, um, when you signed me up to be the voting delegate for town fair, we actually have to, that has to be voted on.
Oh, okay.
We'll vote on it. No problem.
Yeah. I only know that from reading the Herald and Rutland City just had a thing going on with that, so. Um, anything else that, um, anybody needs to add to the agenda?
I don't know.
Motion to accept as amended.
Second it?
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, anything of the minutes of August 24th?
No, September 7th.
Wrong, yeah, you're right. I know, that's just... Yeah. Um, yeah, so, uh, September 7th, sorry.
Good to me.
Hold on, make sure I didn't circle anything. I don't think I did. Nope. All good.
Okay, there you go. These are the minutes for you folks.
Which one are you looking at?
I'm not signing that one.
No, that's, we're, that's, we're tabling it because there was a mistake.
Okay.
The sidewalk scoping study, are we still, is that, um, are we still just paying off what our portion was? Um, because, I mean, the grant covered most of it.
Yeah, I think, I think we're down to like maybe, maybe one more smidgen coming through.
Yep.
But we are about done with that.
All right.
Yeah. The only other question was, um, I do keep getting emails, they want to know if you'd still want them to do a presentation to you, a formal one, or do you just, are you okay with getting the?
I mean, I don't think, we have all the information, plus you were unsure if we'd actually get charged for that too, right? Like if that was like an accumulated?
I think we would get charged.
Well, yeah. I didn't know if there's-
And I figured, you know, you've got, it's pretty, it's a pretty elaborate presentation, the PowerPoint.
Mm-hmm.
If you, I mean, he said that you're more than welcome if you want to look at that PowerPoint, if you have questions, he can always, you know, help you with that.
Yeah, I mean, the fact that we're not acting on those sidewalks.
Yeah.
I don't think we need a full presentation.
No, I mean, we had a reasonable presentation before and-
Right. I know, I don't even know if there was any changes since the last time they presented to us, but-
So what I'll do then is I'll, I'll respond formally to him then, because he's kind of been waiting for me to tell him if you wanted it or not.
Yeah, no, I know, sorry for keeping that in the air.
It's okay.
Yeah, just tell him, we don't, we don't need, we don't need a full presentation, but if, if, yeah, if they just want to send along-
Send the report to us.
What they have, we can just peruse it on our own time.
Okay.
The, uh, $1,500 for camera installation at the transfer station and same thing at the highway garage was $277. There must have been quite a bit of difference in the systems that were put in, I would imagine, to be that much difference in the money. Were these two complete systems that were put in or?
One's the bridge, isn't it? I think, isn't one of those aiming at the bridge?
Must be.
Yeah, that's the one that's going to the bridge, so.
Yeah, there's one that goes a long distance. It's kind of like a high-powered one.
Right, yeah.
It's all the way to depot.
That's the one that goes right, yeah, you pick up the number plate and everything.
It is a pretty elaborate one.
Yeah, records it and everything, so, yeah. Yep, that's what that was.
I see there was, uh, well, it just says fire jacket, $1,635. That must be, uh, for just about everybody in the department, wouldn't it be?
Hell, that's one coat.
I was gonna say.
That's one coat.
One coat.
That's one. Yep.
They're more expensive than the jackets I wear.
I think so.
Well, you're not running into burning buildings, are you?
You're just, you're driving through milk trucks, you're not running into burning buildings, so.
I hear ya. Need something else.
Needs something, yeah, yeah.
I didn't even have a hard hat on. Yeah, that's okay.
Is that it for the orders?
I didn't have anything.
I didn't.
That's it, I guess, for me.
All right. I'm gonna shoot them down.
Oh, boy, we got a whole bunch of it.
There you go.
That's okay.
All right, town managers' report?
All righty, um, I had invited John, uh, Rick, I'm sorry, to come, not John, but Rick, um, to come to the meeting, just because I wanted to formally thank him for all the work he did.
Mm-hmm.
And it helped to let him know that him and his crew did a great job. And the state was very happy, they came out and gave us a very, uh, warm response and how thrilled they were with the way that it came out. And, uh, just wanted to make sure that he knew that we appreciated it and, uh, his, his crew and him with all the work they did, and the rushing.
Mm, yeah.
And the changes, and, you know, it was a little bit hectic there for a while, and we had the, today, the, the guardrails went up, so now it's done, done.
Okay.
We just have to wait for the paving. That's a little bit delayed, we, we thought initially it was gonna come next week, but it looks like it's another week out, so. But other than that, it looks beautiful and, and that was it. That was the only reason to drag you here.
Yeah. Thank you for coming.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for the good work, yeah.
Got off to a rocky start, but it wasn't your fault.
You got through it, though.
It's just too bad that we had a few people that had, you know.
Oh, yeah.
That was, that was a little hard. I, I bother you more than anything, I really will say. But, you know, running into the difficulties was one thing, but when you have people that make it hard for you, and like you say, you want to make it so it's easy for them too, but on the other hand, they need to understand.
They want to do so much.
You know, they do so much.
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you.
Great thing.
Thanks for coming in.
I do have one question I was gonna ask. Was there a time before I came where there was a deal that was gonna get worked out with, with a truck or something between, shared between Water Sewer and Public Works? Was there something going on with that?
Water and Sewer?
Yeah. They were supposed, were they supposed to share the old truck or something? Was that ever talked about?
No.
Yeah, I, I remember something along those lines.
Was there a spare truck to be shared?
Spare, yes, that's right.
Because I was just asked that, just today.
Good memory, Kelly.
And I thought, you know what, I wasn't here, so I'll reach out.
Kelly's a good thing.
That's right, yep, the one that we kept.
Kept.
That way, if one breaks down-
That was, that was the reason.
That's the reason, yep.
So that they could share.
Just in case they could share it and-
So this, and, and he's talking about the old one that we're replacing now, right?
Right.
So I don't know if you guys want to think about that instead of selling it? Because initially Chad was thinking of selling it, right?
Isn't that the one we're talking about?
Am I right?
I thought they had one now, because that was a couple of years ago.
Yeah, that's a few years ago, that was, that isn't recent.
That isn't the current one.
No.
No. So I don't know whatever happened, there was, that one that we kept, I don't know whatever's ever happened to it.
I don't know, does we have an extra, only that one?
We had an extra one.
No, we've got an extra.
We will have, when the new one comes in, correct? Or do we still have an extra right now?
We currently do?
I think we currently have got an extra. It's like a 550 or something, a little four, a small one.
Right, yeah. Well, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's a, yeah, it's like a 550.
Right.
Two-quarter ton or one ton.
I just was trying to figure it out.
Yeah.
Because it was before my time and-
Yeah, it's been a couple of years.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and, because Sean asked me about it today in an email, and I was, later, later this afternoon, of course, and I thought, well, I'll just throw it out there and see what you guys can tell me about it, so I know what, what that's all about.
Okay.
So do we want to keep that older one now that we're gonna have an extra one? Maybe we'll look at that.
Well, no, we don't need a-
We don't need an extra extra.
We don't need junk here.
No.
No.
That's what I'm saying.
No, so, I mean, we need to determine whether the older one is the one to keep or the newer one.
Right.
I mean, the older one could be better than the newer one.
Exactly, we need to find out.
That's what we need to figure out.
Yeah.
But, yeah, we don't need a multitude of trucks.
See, so I picked a good discussion.
It is.
One extra is fine, but-
We don't need two.
No.
Not two extra.
No, maybe it's-
We'll eliminate one, we'll sell one if we have to.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. No, you can find out which truck.
Find out which one's the better one, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Chad and Sean can tell you probably which one they want to keep.
Yeah, okay, I'll haul them in and have them both in the room at the same time.
There you go, that way we'll know.
So, just a couple of things, um, that came through my email, and I can't recall, I know I forward things, but sometimes I might forget if I did or not. Um, there's some special funding that came through from a John Kaplan, and it has to do with funding for a sidewalk.
What?
Yeah. And I can work on it with the school. So, the, there's a woman that works in the health office, she's the health manager over there at, at this school.
At Lothrath?
Yep. Melanie, I believe, Parker.
Melanie Parker.
Melanie, so Melanie's gonna come over here, it's either Monday or Tuesday next week, and we're gonna sit down and try to get that going. Because they have the plan that they're supposed to have, but the caveat is that the state wouldn't bless their plan because they didn't do the full Route 7 yet. Okay? But they do have a plan, so he said to go ahead and try to get this anyway, even though it's not like blessed yet by the state. So I'm gonna work on that, um, next week with her. And then there's another, there was another bit of, uh, federal money that popped up on my screen today, and I'm gonna look into that as well. So I'm trying to find as many, so I figured, you know what, if we have to delay the sidewalk, it may be a good thing in a way if I can get some funding.
That's what it sounds, yeah, right.
It may be able to offset and not have to do-
We, we went to the school, what, three, four years ago about funding and getting this done, and they were, back then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I thought it was a good thing.
That caused some hard feelings between boards.
No, and I know, because I was, it was disappointing to hear that the sidewalks wouldn't be done until next year, but now it sounds like this is a good thing.
Kind of, maybe it's a blessing in disguise, I, you know, I'm thinking, it may be give me a chance to, to get some of this extra, the money, and we have to dip into the ARPA so deep.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
So I want to let you know about that, that I'm working on that next week.
One more winter isn't gonna kill us, I don't think.
So we're not-
At this point, no.
You know, at this point.
It stands right now, the sidewalks aren't gonna get paved this year.
Doesn't sound it.
Well, he doesn't have time, right, so.
We're at such a short span now before they close out.
A lot of it has to do with the state.
Right.
I've been noticing.
It's a chain reaction.
Yeah.
You know, he couldn't, he can't do what he's gotta do until they finish doing what they've gotta do.
I know, and they're all backed up.
And they're all backed up, and this guy here, North, is-
And I've been trying to communicate with them for-
At least they got some of the roads.
Yeah, exactly, they still are screwed up.
Well, yeah, but at least they aren't ditching.
No.
Because he's pushed out now, not including the West Creek, because he knows he's, he's gonna do that, but he's pushed out after that beyond, like, the end of November.
Yeah.
So, yeah. The other thing was, um, FEMA, um, they do, well, the state does an annual check-in with us regarding Pittsburgh's current emergency relief assistant fund. Um, this is something that, uh, the state met, does a match based upon our rating. So they sent us our rating, and we, we are eligible for the 12 and a half percent, which is good. It's like middle of the road, it's not the lowest, it's not the highest. Um, the lowest you can go is seven and a half, the highest is 17 and a half, and we've got the 12 and a half. State match. So it's not, that's not too bad. And I do have all this in an email, I can forward it to you if you didn't get it, I couldn't remember if I sent this one or not.
Yeah, no, I mean, I know about that, I've known about that for years, but, yeah.
Okay, all right.
The only way we get full is if we do, oh, what is it? There's one more thing the planning commission would have to do to get full.
Oh.
And they've kind of locked on, well, it's, it's a little bit intrusive on people.
Yep.
So, yeah.
Okay, and then, um, I, I also received an email from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, DHS, Center for Prevention Programs, and they're trying to have all town managers and people that are in, you know, in a position to educate people or make people aware about violence prevention. They have actually a, a program that they're offering free for people to log in and go take this program. It has to do with trying to prevent, um, terrorism in the community and violence. Um, I, I would imagine it gives people, um, a little sense of empowerment and just kind of wakes you up a little bit as to what's going on in the world and the state that we're in. Um, I didn't know if you wanted me to maybe post something like this out on our website, you know, just in case anyone's interested.
Yeah.
So I wanted to tell you about that. Um, during my time, uh, since we last met, um, I told you about West Creek, the Route 7 paving, we already talked about that, I'm going down my notes here. Um, we've been working on a lot of, Anne and I have been working on a lot of the ordinances and policies. So I know, I'm pretty sure, the finance policy has been through the gamut now, we, we've had Helen look at every, all the ladies in the, the front office have taken a look at this as well, and they're okay with it. Um, this is a piece that I need to get uploaded into the system for the CDBG Village Farm. So what I did is they allowed me to upload one before you approved it with a note that it's not approved.
Okay.
And, but then, once you approve it, they want to, they want that one, so that's in my pile here for you. The other ordinances and policies, I don't know if you still need additional review time.
I have notes on all mine, or all of them.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, what, what I want to see is the old one to compare the two.
Yeah, so we compare them.
Changes in them. Because they seem, what I read on them, they were pretty hard-handed, I can't believe that's what we had before, so I want to see the old ones compared to the new ones.
Okay.
Also, that is all of our new business, is talking about those policies, right?
It would be, it would-
Pretty much.
Pretty much. It would be nice if, if there's any changes that they be brought to our attention, if these policies are staying as they have been historically.
Sure.
That's one thing.
Yeah.
But if, or there's changes one way or the other, that's what I would like to-
Okay.
Harson Red.
Oh, red, basically, I mean, either, I mean, I'd like to see the originals anyway, but-
Right, right.
And, and red line-
The changes.
The changes in the new ones.
Okay.
So we know what's changed.
All right, we can do that. And all, so you want to just refer all of it?
All of them, yep.
Okay.
Policies, we can do it.
Well, there goes all our new business, we have no new, no new business on the agenda now.
I'd be quick, but policies, we have to be careful, we can change policies, but the other stuff, we can't change unless you have public hearings and stuff.
Right.
Right, so that's, be careful of that.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
You know, our ordinance-
I think the one, the, the only one that I, I was, I, I thought for sure you'd be okay with, though, was the coin drop one.
Oh, that's the one I have most marked up.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay. Gotcha.
Yeah.
All right.
Yes.
So, all right, so then, um, the other things I've done, I, I had a Zoom meeting on the cannabis regulations with the state, and, uh, this more had to do with retail establishments, and then they gave like a, a few pictures of what they, what their vision is of what they should look like if you do have one in your town. That's, so they have like a template of how they expect it to look, it's, and I, I mean visually.
Really?
Like, yes, they have a, and then there's certain security measures that will have to be followed, and cam, certain types of cameras have to be installed. So, I mean, it was, you know, it was pretty involved, it was pretty heavy-duty, you know, if you, if, if you want to open one of those in town. Um, but it also, they want it to have a certain aesthetic to it, um, kind of neat, sharp, no frilly lines, just very open, like a very open establishment, not a lot of nooks and crannies in there and all that, they want it to be very well-lit, so it went on and on about all that. Um, had a, uh, meeting with the mosquito commission, um, so we're going over the grant that's coming, we've been going over changes to the way, um, certain towns have been, um, treated. Um, I can talk more about that in executive session. Um, but going over the budget for the new year and that sort of thing, um, everything's been going well there. There was a few instances, and I try to forward those to you when they do testing and they come up with the West Nile.
Oh, yeah.
I always try to forward that to you so that you're aware of it, if it's in the community. Um, the town hall audit was completed, um, for the most part, there's probably a few fringes that he still, Chad needs to still do, but he was happy, he said he was pleased with everything, so that went well. Um, I met with the veterans committee regarding Veterans Day and that celebration that you folks do-
Yep.
-on 11/11 at 11:00. So we worked on a, um, an agenda for that, and we're in the process of getting the different components of that, um, the bugle player, singing, and, and all that is being worked on right now to get that lined up, and then ref, like a quick refreshment session. Um, we already talked about the sidewalk. We've also been revising the job descriptions because they were very old, um, so, and they're, they're coming along pretty well, um, so we've been giving them to the people that are doing them. And, and for, um, the front office, Helen has kind of, uh, the final review, so she has those for that office down there. Um, the trucking situation at Armia is, is ongoing. Um, let's see. There was a letter forwarded to the board as well from a citizen regarding dog complaints. Yeah, that was an old, uh, I think you already know the history on that and all.
Yeah, because it's, all of that was in, first was back in 2018 or something, right?
Yeah, and evidently he was supposed to meet with you folks back then and cancel it, and I think he-
He's canceled, well, at least twice.
Yeah, so, this is just a continuation of that same-
Well, so should we schedule another one?
I don't know if, I think he-
Not unless he requests it.
I thought that's what he was-
It sounded like he was requesting it, and I thought.
If he, if he wants to request, if, if, I didn't read it verbatim, the letter, I've, I've had a phone call with him probably twice a week for the past, since I got here.
Really?
He calls a lot.
I know, I did read through it, I don't remember his exact, exact verbiage, but he did want the select board to act on it, I don't know if he specifically-
Well, we can act, unless we have a hearing.
We have a hearing.
Oh, no, I would like to request a dog hearing.
Yeah.
No, I thought that he requested a hearing.
So we'll have to, so we gotta schedule that.
I thought it was on the old one, that's why.
And that's kind of where it was left before John went through all that.
Schedule a dog hearing, then.
Yep.
How, um, how much time do we, how much time do we usually do that?
We have, we have ordinances regarding the dog kind of foul.
Well, you usually put it out, what, 10 days prior?
When there's a complaint, we have to have a meeting, I believe, and-
Right.
You can do it in October, and you can, yeah.
Yeah.
Before a meeting, usually we do it before the dog.
The decision is to, what we want to recommend.
It'll take a half hour if that.
But each time, each time the police have been called and responded, though-
Usually it's scheduled about 30 minutes.
-an issue. The dogs are under control when they arrive and it doesn't seem to be-
Do a 5:30.
Can be exaggerated a little.
Yeah.
That can happen.
Yeah. But they're, they're, they're contained in their home, you know, in their property, and they have dog collars on.
Yep.
Um-
We had a, we had a dog problem down by the mobile station years ago, and it was, the four dogs were the, it was two neighbors that had differences, and the dogs got dragged into it.
Into the middle of it, right?
Sort of thing.
Yeah.
Funny how that turned out, the, one place they moved away, and the other place has been soles.
Van a light right there.
That's the end of our dog problem.
Is there an hour there?
All right, so, I mean-
Our next meeting's the 5th.
Yes, we could do the 5th or the 19th, I guess.
We should reach out and see what's gonna work best for-
Do you remember, how long do we have to warn them? Was it 10 days?
I think it's 15.
Is it 15? I know there's a time.
If it's a public hearing, it's 15.
It's a public hearing, it's 15 days.
We should just do it the 19th then, to be safe.
Yep, well, the 19th, so then we have to post it.
Yeah.
Well, that'll have to be-
Posted 15 days prior.
Or whatever, I would imagine.
Yep.
Okay. All right.
That'll give them time to back it up again.
Yep, yep.
Well, yeah.
I'll, I'll contact him.
Yep.
Are you saying 5:30 for them?
Yes, we want an hour.
Yeah.
He gives us an hour, that should hopefully be enough.
Oh, at five thirty, okay.
Okay.
Alright.
Cause if I don't put it on my calendar, I'll be late.
I'll let him know, but I'm also gonna draft a letter letting him know.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just gonna call him, I'm gonna make sure it's formal.
Right.
Send him a letter.
Um, speed signs, so I submitted a request for the permit to put them in, for us to install them.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I'm still waiting, so I have to see how that, I don't know how long that process is gonna be. And then, that's another one where I'm trying to see if there's some money out there because they are expensive, it's anywhere from three to four thousand for each one.
Okay.
Um, those are for the ones that are solar, the re, the re, the feedback ones. Then I know you were interested also, you said you wanted one portable as well? Or do you want just two stationary? I, cause I requested.
Portable coming.
We got.
We got one.
We have one.
I thought we had another one coming.
Maybe, I don't know. Mike, that tells us that.
I know.
Some reason I, I thought in my head we had another portable coming.
I'm not aware of that.
Something, okay, maybe not, maybe I'm dreaming, I don't know.
The two we're talking, the one on each, each end of town.
I think that conversation came from when we were debating whether to have.
Probably, yeah.
You know, mobile ones versus the.
Versus the permanent, yeah.
So what, when I filled out the, the permit, they wanna know where you wanna put them. So the placement where I put in the permit was at Furnace and the intersection of Route seven, northbound. And then southbound at Kamuta, the top here of Kamuta, southbound.
So three of them?
Two.
Oh, oh.
So one on, because those sections seem to be where they're doing the heavy ticketing. Through that area, through the school, and I thought that was the most commonsensical, unless you had a different idea.
There was times one on top of the hill by the mobile, no?
Top of the hill by the mobile? Going down, you mean?
Just as you're coming in to where it reduces from fifty to thirty-five, like, isn't that what we talked about?
Up top of Slosson Hill.
Yeah, top of Slosson Hill, and then by, um, just coming up the hill just before you get to the Plains Road.
Before you get to Plains Road.
Right there.
Well, I thought you were more concerned.
By Dollar General, just before Dollar General.
Or near the bank.
Or near the bank.
Somewhere along.
Somewhere right in there.
Oh, I thought you were more concerned about like the school zone and the children and all that.
We wanted to slow down the whole village, that's, the, the biggest complaint we had is on Slosson Hill, which is by the mobile station, coming down that.
That hill, cause they don't slow down until they're coming down the hill.
They don't slow down at all.
Right.
That's a critical one, I think, right there, we talked about that.
You want me to amend my request? So you want it?
Yeah, I mean, the only other, so, I agree with that, the only other place would be I mean, I can see one near Furnace Road to slow down because you're coming thirty-five coming up and then it slows to twenty-five. I don't, the traffic coming down through, I mean, once they hit that bridge and start up by the school, they're slowing up anyway.
They're really slowing down right there.
So that, but it's coming the other way, a lot of them haven't slowed down. But if you're getting them down to thirty-five ahead of time, I don't know, uh, or may, are we maybe we need to talk to Mike, maybe we just need two headed north and not worry at this point in time about the ones that are headed south. Put one at the top of the hill where you're talking to get them at thirty-five at the top of the hill.
Keep starting, starting slowing down.
So, and then put one by Bernard Funeral Home to, the Davis is somewhere around on that corner to make sure they're down to twenty-five before they get to the school.
Set the portable one up on seven if we have to temporarily.
Or, I mean, it was set up a lot of times.
Get another one later.
Right at the bottom of the hill before you head up to the school, if you're headed south, you come down through, cross that bridge. And it was set there, that worked pretty good, cause you came down and it was right there. So, uh, I mean, I'm almost thinking, coming from the south, two coming from the south at this point in time, see how they're working.
See how they go and then.
And if, then, another one somewhere else if we have to.
Yeah, I agree with that, cause that's, that's where the big problem is.
Fall onto the town for their judgment, or does the state have control and they decide where things are gonna go like this?
They, well, they ask, they ask on the form where you, you know, where, where I want them, like, where am I asking to place them on their road, basically?
So the approval would fall to the state.
Correct, and if they didn't like where I was saying I was gonna put them, they'd say, well, you know, we might say, okay, but we don't like that placement there, we want you to put it here.
Because the ones, they're slowed down because of the corner.
They have to slow down because of the corner.
Cause they don't make it.
And then, you know, the rest of that road, they're really not.
No, no way they're really.
Gaining that much speed. And the one, the one at the top of the mobile hill, that would help with the engine brakes that everybody's complaining about going down the hill, cause they'd already be slowed. So you'd still, but the brake would be nowhere near as loud going down that hill. So that would help with that complaint too.
We talked about right where that thirty-five mile an hour sign is, that's where we wanna put that, cause it's right up.
Or ju, well, just beyond it.
Just beyond it, but right in that area.
That area, yeah.
So there and then Furnace Road.
From fifty to thirty-five.
Is that what you're deciding?
Well, somewhere between Burna, Bernard Funeral Home or whatever it's called today, the funeral home and Furnace Road, somewhere right in that section.
Well, I kind of already.
Well, that, that one might be okay.
Well, that's, yeah, we wanna, that's.
Yeah, so that one's okay, that's just the other one.
That one's okay, but I.
The other one from Kamuta is put up on top of Slosson Hill, what we call Slosson Hill.
Yeah.
Has the state made any recommendations or?
Yeah, I didn't get to that yet.
No, that's what she's doing.
I'm just in the process now, so this is like the beginning steps, yeah.
Seems like, seems like the state would have some recommendations and some thoughts that might help us.
Yeah, they may.
They may have final, I don't know what the rules are, but the state might have final say over what happens anyway.
Well, they're gonna have final say.
They have final say.
They do have.
They have, but we're suggesting where we want it. They may tell us, no.
Yeah.
Then we gotta go back to the drawing board, but.
Right.
But I think on top of that hill and then by near Furnace Road, I think that's.
Okay.
Those two.
Those two.
Cause Kamuta, they slow down on that corner.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only place, the only place on this end of town you'd put one is right after the hill by where Plains Road comes on, right in there, before the bank.
Yep.
Where Winning Image is, right in there, because people come over that hill and they're going way too fast.
Oh, they're doing, oh, yeah, they're going fifty, fifty-five.
Well, yeah, nobody slows down till they're over the hill.
I think there's a significant bunch of choices because going up through New Haven Junction, up through there in the dark, which I do. If you're going too fast, a blue light comes on, there's a cop sitting down there. If you're not going too fast, orange lights come on. So there are quite a few different designs.
Well, in town, well, in towns, the blue light comes on if you're going way too fast.
Way too fast, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
I think that.
Gets your attention, that's what it does.
That does.
Yep.
I don't know whether Mike would be up to date on what signs are available or not, but I think you can set them up to do whatever you want.
No, no.
Oh, you can't, you can't?
No.
I thought you couldn't have the flashing on seven.
I don't think you can. On the state road, you can only use the, um, I think it's similar to what's in Brandon.
Right, the flashes, slow down.
The flashing, slow down. You can't, even though the sign, and they already warned me, the sign is capable of many different signs, many different, you know, little sting.
You'll even take pictures of the license plate, yeah.
If you had it on your town road, you could probably do it.
Do what you want, yeah.
Yeah.
I was surprised when I went up through New Haven here a little while ago, I see a blue light flashing down there by the railroad tracks, and what the hell, the cop down here? Was his sign, speed sign.
Joe.
Pick up your right foot a little bit.
Yeah, you're going too fast.
It was somebody ahead of me, I'm just.
Yeah, okay, I'm glad you clarified that.
Yeah.
I'm cool, I just started doing.
Yeah, okay, Joe, yeah, alright, alright.
But, the sign did change colors, which I, I was amazed, and I said, geez, that's a hell of a good thing.
I don't know, the blue lights will get your attention.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah. Good coverage, Joe, good coverage.
Thinking quick.
Yep.
So, the other thing is, um, I've begun the process, um, of, uh, getting the budget started. So you had asked me, you know, when are we going? So, I'm, I plan on having a meeting, I, I call it, it, and you, you can tell me no, yes, whatever, it's, this is my first time with you guys, so I don't know what your process has been like in the past, but everywhere that I've been, and I've had to control the budget, so I'm used to a process, and then if you don't like it, I can change it. But usually what I would do is meet with the department heads first and have like a kickoff meeting and talk about it, go over the spreadsheet, discuss what it is they think their needs are, what I see and, or anticipate being substantially more expensive next year, those kind of things, just have a, a talk. Then they go on their way and do their, fill it out, then they would send them back to me. Um, I would compile them and get all the data together, so that then you folks can review and get a first swipe at what comes through to you. Then the other thing, and I, I got feedback from everyone, is they would like to also find out afterwards, after you folks review it, they'd like me to meet with them again too and let them know what you guys think, what your thoughts are, so that they have some feedback on whether they're going down the wrong path or whatever. Yeah, so I, I like to have it be like a really good communication circle with it, and then everyone's on the same page.
We also do like a five-year estimate as to what you think you need, you know, next year, the following year, any big things that might come up.
Capital improvements.
Capital improvements, we like that from each department.
Yeah.
Yep, absolutely. Um, so, so I do have that scheduled for, uh, October sixth. Um, the next, uh, staff meeting is gonna be, um, on the thirteenth, uh, October thirteenth, and that's for everybody. Um, then I have another, some more bad news. So, so the police vehicle has fallen in disrepair. Um, last night, the catalytic converter overheated and it basically threw a rod.
Oh, Jesus.
Well, that's not good.
Well, good thing the new one's almost ready.
So the estimated repair, so outside of the engine, which would, needs to be replaced at this point, he had the guy come out and do like a quick estimate, but he wanted to make sure I was gonna tell you guys about it tonight. So it's like between five and six thousand to repair it, including labor. He said the rest of the, the remainder of the vehicle's in really good condition and he feels it still has a great deal of life left on it though, so to, to just like junk it wouldn't be, make sense. Um, also, then, then to like counteract that, cause I was like, oh, and then he's like, oh, but I have good news, so. So the good news part is, um, the radios that you folks approved for him to get, he ordered. So he, he got a call today from, uh, the company and they said, guess what, they're six months behind now. These are for the new, the new car. So they were talking and the guy said, hey, I've got, you know, this used set, I can tweak them for you and, and you can have those for three fifty, three hundred and fifty dollars.
Oh, okay.
So I said, well, that was a good decision, so he made a judgment call and he did it, and I said, that was a good, good idea, so, and then the guy also said, I'll tell you what I'll do, I'll keep the new ones on order, if they come in, I'll give you first refusal, so if he, if he decides that the temp, you know, the used ones don't work. So this was a really good solution to, you know, a bad situation.
Good.
Um.
Is that Durango?
It's the older car.
Durango.
Yeah, Durango.
So that almost saves us enough to pay for the new engine, not quite, but. Cause those, those radios were what, four or five grand, right?
That was around five, right?
Yeah, it was, it was like five.
Five, so, yeah, so it's, yeah.
Kind of a wash.
Well, that works.
Not quite, but close.
Kinda.
And if they work out, he's like, you know, they're fine, if they work, then there's no need to get the new ones.
Yeah.
So that was a good, that was a good call on his part. Um, then the last thing I have is, um, I met, I had another Zoom meeting with FEMA regarding the Meadowee River watershed, or, excuse me, wat, yeah, watershed flood zone, we're talking about the flood zone map, and they're starting their fact finding for that now.
Why are we concerned with the Meadowee?
We are in part of it.
A Meadowee?
No, we're not.
Yeah.
Yeah, we are.
Yeah, we are.
Oh, over in West Rutland, that were that way? Okay, that's right, yeah.
We are, we are.
Castleton River, that's right.
Big part of it.
No.
But it does.
Yeah, that's right.
So Chad was on that too and Sean as well, so. So they're just starting that process.
No, but that does go that way.
Um, I, I think that is all I have. That's enough, right?
Yep, that's enough. Um, any select board member remarks? Any public comment? You're good. Um, alright, uh, so, old business, financial policy approval, so what, what we.
Okay with that one?
What we had in the packet, that is what you worked on with Helen and Liz, so they're, yeah.
It is. That one, okay?
Looked fine to me, yeah, yeah.
So that's this one right here.
So I would make a motion to approve.
Second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Your name's not on that, Joe. No, this is just Alicia and I, we're the ones that are gonna get caught for this one.
Yep, you go to jail.
Going to jail, geez. It's a rough crowd.
Yeah. There are those days, it might not be bad. Exactly. I don't have to walk anywhere, that'd be the good part.
I want to pay my fuel bill this winter.
Yeah.
Okay, um, oh, thank you. Okay. Uh, ARPA survey discussion.
Yeah.
Oh, wait a minute, we're on back.
So, you, you folks had asked me to reach out to the two depart, you know, basically the two departments to find out, because on the, the one that was online for folks to kind of, you know, weigh in on, most of that seemed to revolve around the rec. And there was a lot of positive support for the rec.
I do have site.
And then you folks wanted me to reach out to Water Sewer and Chad, so I had them give me their rough estimate of a few things that they might need. I didn't know what you wanted from that, really, I mean, there was a few, there's some pieces of equipment that Chad had come up with and then there was a list of like a short, uh, five things from Sean that he might be interested in, do you want me to just?
Little stuff.
Little, little in comparison to some of the bigger things.
I was gonna say, usually when he comes in here, it ain't little stuff he's after.
So I, I guess I really didn't know where to go with that. I didn't know if you already have to say.
So those, alright, so when I looked through that, there was, it looked to be all, I thought, water.
I know, that's all I saw was water.
Prices on the water, but no prices on the sewer. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, so are we gonna get prices on the sewer upgrades? So we can, well, have a full picture?
Well, and just, and just the water was six hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Well, for all of them.
All of it, I'm just saying, but, and we have nothing for sewer.
We have nothing in the sewer and sewer's kind of important.
So, he has on here one through five, oh, yeah, on the sewer, okay, I see what you're saying, yeah, I can get back to you on that.
Yeah, so we've got the full picture.
So let me do that and then I can email that to you and do it that way, if that's okay with you.
Yeah. Wait, so do we have numbers from you, from what you, we do?
Yeah, that, his came in a little later.
Scared to hand them in.
Oh, you know what, the other thing too, um, this was, this is quick, do you remember I had mentioned about, um, the twenty-seven valves and you wanted to know what that?
Oh, is that what this is?
That's what this is.
I was confused by it, but, cause there's all kinds of different.
So right where it says Route seven sidewalk?
Yep.
That was, that was the cost for that, that was what I was looking for for the, the ARPA piece.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
I just wanted to explain that.
Three thousand something was it?
Yeah, three thousand five hundred.
Yeah, that's what that was.
Okay.
So, I'm just gonna pass this down, this is what, um, I just got this from Chad. It's, uh, one of them's, I, I'll let you explain it, you're better at explaining the equipment.
We can, yes, we can look while, while you're speaking.
Yeah, we, 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 we do have the ability to read and listen at the same time. I don't, so.
We can multitask sometimes.
So, I don't know how, what the order is, but, this is the first one, the gold from out of Fairfield for a asphalt hot box. Which, right now, when we need to do paving, we go with our small truck or big truck, and how much we're getting, dump it in that and spread it out and sometimes it gets cold and whatever, but this allows us, we'll put it in there, it has a diesel or propane heater, it'll keep it hot. So if we don't get through it all one day, we can have it next day.
Oh, okay.
And also, it has the ability to, if we dig up a section of road, if the asphalt's somewhat decent, we can put it in that, it'll melt it back down and we can reuse it. So it's less waste, I think that was like thirty-eight thousand, that's new one, so, I mean, that was actually not a bad price.
Jeezum.
Another item is a roller that we would, after we grade the roads, recommend rolling it and packing it down. It just helps the road stay longer. Well, actually, I was waiting for a quote for a new price on a new one, but I saw a used one, it was company. Wouldn't include shipping, cause I think it was North Dakota, it's kind of out there, it wasn't close, I couldn't, didn't find one close, but I was rushed, so. So that one's, I think, what, sixteen, sixteen-five or two thousand fourteen?
Well, okay, can I ask a question?
You can.
Why can't you use this asphalt roller to roll your roads? It's the same thing, right? Isn't this the asphalt?
No, that's my roller.
Oh, so this isn't the asphalt box?
No picture.
Oh, there's no picture for, okay, alright.
I might, I might have one in the, my truck, I just had it.
I didn't know, but it just laid it out and rolled it and packed it all for you, okay?
Roller, there's a spot, there's two options, one's like a, you put a water tank for weight, or I think that one's a picture of you can put sand or waste blocks and that blocks in for extra added weight. Um, but you know, the hot box is a trailer, it's got the box and it's, and can, if you don't use all the material, you don't make it off as well. And so then, cool, you load it back up, heat it back up.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the same thing.
And then the third one is a bucket truck, and that's like a variety on that. I think the one I found online, but it's like reasonably priced, twenty-three thousand, but it's also ninety-eight. I don't really need one that big, but for the price, why not?
What's the height?[1726.39]
Uh, you know what, I don't know, it's at least forty feet, don't need anymore. And I think I added, like, there's different options for that, I mean, that one's kind of like the balancore truck, it's got the bucket with the chip box on it. Um, I did price, what for our five fifty turquoise, they, uh, install bodies, uh, the bucket bodies. Um, I think that was like sixty thousand for just a new body onto that truck. Or, you know, obviously go anywhere in between. It's just, the advantage of having our own is, we have a tree, we can go take care of it with a call tree company or wait or.
It seems like, um, GMP's getting a little more kind of persnickety there in some locations, and it's taking longer. There, we had a, what was it, what was that tree that everyone was, we were getting calls and calls?
Furnace Road. Furnace Road goes long.
Still dangling?
It's still there, yeah.
Right. So they won't touch it?
Service wire is going through, they don't touch, they'll come take the service wires out, so a company can come.
Where's, where's that one, on Furnace?
Uh, Carreras.
Oh.
Common Carreras, huh?
Yeah, I walk on, underneath that widow maker all the time.
For years.
I do wa, I walk extra fast when I go under that tree though, not gonna lie.
In your case, it'll be an orphan maker.
Yeah.
Oh, I guess that would be true.
Yeah, the tree is.
It's fifty-five feet, it goes up.
No, it's fifty-five, okay.
Yeah.
Like I said, I was, just kind of got more for the picture than, um, but yeah, so that's gonna, since I don't mind using equipment, I'm not asking for a lot.
Relatively speaking. Yeah.
If the town were to have a bucket truck, the people that are gonna be operating that, getting around electric wires and stuff to cut trees off it, they're gonna have to go through some special training and.
Yeah, but I'm sure, I don't.
Most of the time, you probably, hopefully won't be anywhere.
If it's anything that close to the wire.
Yeah, we wouldn't be doing it. I was gonna say, yeah, you wouldn't be doing it anyways.
I mean, we've gone, recently did, um, Plains Road and Creed Hill, went around and trimmed limbs that were.
Not sure would've been handy when we had that nor'easter.
Hmm.
Fun side, we, we got stuck in there, had trees, ten tall trees in front of us and behind us with fire trucks. With the structure fires going on in the meantime.
That's crazy.
Oh, yeah.
I think that one's a good idea, the bucket truck.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm positive you have a lot of use for that thing.
Oh, yeah.
Cause you got a lot of overhanging limbs over our roads.
What, that we can go around, I mean.
I mean, just right up, uh, Corn Hill, you got a bunch of them on Corn Hill, hang right over the road that. Blocks your vision on some of them, and, yep, I wouldn't be against that myself. You got money in your account to buy it?
Well, these are all ARPA, these are all ARPA ideas.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
That truck, I probably do, I probably have money.
Well, if it's something that's available now.
I, I'm, at that price, I don't have a problem with that, I guess, I mean, I certainly don't think we need a brand new one.
No.
Or anything even remotely like that, cause you.
That's not bad.
You know, it's one of those things you're gonna get, in two or three years, you're gonna get most of the limbs taken care of, and then at that point. Well, you can sell it, or you're only gonna use it occasionally after that.
There's always gonna be dead trees or.
Oh, yeah.
Right, no, I'm not, but I'm, what I'm saying is you.
I agree, yeah.
You know, you're getting backed up with that stuff now, cause it's all over the place, there's limbs hanging that need to come down.
You got a chipper, right?
We have the chipper.
Got a chipper, we'll go with it, so, there you go.
Yeah, I mean, the biggest thing with that is just making sure the bucket's certified.
Yeah, you gotta make sure it's certified.
Yep.
Let me see that again.
Down through, oh, yeah, yeah. Exactly. It'll catch ya. All right, so we don't need to make a decision on this tonight, right, we're just trying to get a list of things that we can spend this money on, so. That.
You want to order it?
Kind of, kind of open and, and maybe getting are two different things.
And there's all kind of, like I said, that was just an example, this is a, throw out there, but yeah, there's plenty out there and.
Well, and getting an older truck isn't a bad idea, cause it's a lot simpler and, you know.
That model, I mean, that's trucks we used to run.
Yeah.
Right, and, you know, you can pretty much fix them yourselves and.
Yeah.
And you're not gonna be putting a lot of miles on them, so.
No.
That doesn't look like a bad rig.
No. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and so I guess we do have the, we have the number for the water valve installation, so it's thirty-five hundred.
Yep.
Um, and then revisit the ARPA survey and priorities, well, I guess we already determined that the rec was.
Priority.
Yeah, the priority. Yeah.
So I, from my perspective right now, I think we need to come up with the list from the rec. Uh, you know, this truck that Chad's talking about, if that's something we're interested in. Um, the water valves, which we're gonna need anyway if we, cause we're gonna do the sidewalks. So those things, that, a list of that stuff, that'll give us an idea kind of what that's gonna be, then we can pick maybe one of these either water or sewer lines to do.
Mm-hmm.
Or maybe a water line and a sewer line. Uh, but we'll, I, from my perspective, we need to talk to Sean, and I know he's got them listed here.
Yeah, he, uh, I was at the water board meeting last night, they're concerned about, I guess, going down Elm Street, replacing a lot of lanes down there, they have a lot of trouble down there.
They have a lot of trouble down there.
So that's, that's a priority, and the sewer too.
Well, if you're doing the water, you do the sewer at the same time.
Boy, I might still do them both.
He had that emergency repair down there this past week.
And then it's what, the other one's Patley Drive, it's just a short one, that's just a short thing. Those, those are the two major ones that he was talking about last night.
Okay.
Okay.
So if we get together and, and get those numbers laid out, so we can see what kind of money we're looking at for a total. Cause I mean, I'm not against, if you can find a bucket truck for twenty-five grand.
The other thing too, while you're mulling everything over, is the, the plan for the state, there's that one stretch of road that was not done. When you guys did your plans, there was one, the stretch from, I think it was, I wanna say Kamuta's, right around there, up. There's a, there's a stretch that wasn't modeled by Otter Creek. Everyone thought Otter Creek did it, but they didn't, so it's like missing from the plan.
Is that around the Plack Park, I mean?
No. Let me get, I'll get you more detail on that, but basically, we, we need to have Otter, Otter Creek do the drawing for it, because you're gonna need it when the state does eventually come through, whenever that is, it's missing right now, that piece, there's a stretch.
None of the money we paid, it hadn't ought to be missing.
No, they better be doing that.
Yeah, it is.
Well, the only reason I can think they would've left it out was, because of the upgrade at the sewer plant on the dump road.
Yeah.
That line, they were talking, that line goes up through there somewhere, would it have gotten left out because of that? There's gotta be a plan for that line somewhere.
I, I even spoke with Otter Creek, and it wasn't.
Hmm.
He doesn't know why, he doesn't, he doesn't, he doesn't, and I, he's, he's, um, forget his first name. He's, he doesn't know why that happened, but he, it, it, he ensured me that it, they don't have it, and the state has said they don't have it, when they met with me here.
Okay.
So let me get, like, all the numbers for that, because I don't, wouldn't, I would hate, while you have the ARPA funds.
Yeah.
I'd hate to sidestep that, because I thi, I think that's important, cause you are gonna need it. Because whenever they decide to put that plan together, if it's missing, they'll skip over you again. So, and I don't know how that happened.
You miss a chunk of road like that. Anyway.
Let me get more information for you.
Okay.
And then I'll get an estimate from Otter Creek on what that will cost to do. He said he has no problem doing it for you, and he could probably do it.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah.
But hopefully there'll be some funding for that.
He didn't really, and I talked to Sean about it too, and he, he knew about what took place, this is before, once again, before my time. I was trying to get as much information as I could, but he said it really didn't make a lot of sense either at the time, why they didn't finish it.
Yeah.
It was like they stopped, the, the drawing stopped at a certain spot, and he didn't.
Hmm.
He didn't understand why either. He, he wanted to run that line all the way.
Blackberry Lane, when they had that issue down there.
It could be, but.
But they shouldn't have skipped it.
Shouldn't have skipped it, no, and it had, again, there, there's gotta be something, because they were, initially, you were putting, well, they screwed up on the size of the pump down by the dump. Cause initially, it was voted to do that, they were putting a big pump, that, there was gonna be a new line all the way up the hill, right up through. I thought, I don't remember if it was going all, I don't, it wasn't going all the way to the sewer plant, but I thought it was going up over the top of that hill to tie into some other lines.
Or it would gravity feed down.
Or it would, right, that's what I thought it was doing.
Gonna pump it up.
Cause they're pumping it up over the top of that hill, then it tied into the other lines.
Stretch. Cause Sean.
Yeah, that's, that.
Yeah.
Oh, that isn't done?
They didn't do, there's no drawing.
Oh, okay, well, yeah, cause I can't, like I say, that was in that, I'm sure that was in that plan for that big pump. Well, is, is there even any sewer lines there?
No.
No.
Water line is.
Water.
It goes down Depot.
Well, oh, yeah.
Well, yeah, comes down Plains Road, crosses.
Plains Road crosses and goes, it ends at Plains Road.
Yeah, Winning Image and that, and then down Depot.
Yeah, right, so, so it's a water line up that way, okay.
I think that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gotta be the water line going, yeah. Cause there's a hydrant at the.
Between the two pump stations.
No, they were doing away with that, the ever, initially, everything was going down to the bottom to a massive pump. And then they screwed up the engineering, and they didn't realize they didn't have enough power to run the pump they had. And so that whole thing got thrown out, and we went back to having the two pumps again, cause they were, from the bottom, they were putting a big line up. And I'm sure it was going over the top to where it would, like Joe said, gravity into the other lines. And it was, so, that would've been done all the way basically to Blackberry or Blueberry, whatever it is lane, like. Whatever it is, it would go to there.
Should've go to there, yeah, so that's probably the section that's missing then, from.
But, that isn't what's missing according to Sean.
It's from Plains Road to the truck route.
But the, the water line there goes from the truck route, goes up Pine Woods Road, there's nothing on seven.
Part of the cross country.
Right.
No, there's the long seven, cause we've buried in front of JR's.
But it wasn't part of the grid.
Oh, okay, I was thinking it swerved off and didn't go down.
Well, I just wanted to make sure I brought this out, because.
Yeah.
It's an expense.
So does it, you got the new line.
The new line goes down.
Goes down the truck route.
Down the truck route, that's the new one.
And that comes down Pine Woods, right, to the truck route?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So does the line you're talking about feed from that line, or just go to that line, or you don't know? The water doesn't tell you which direction it came from?
Goes either way, it don't matter.
It's usually going, oh, okay. No, I didn't know, yeah.
I just know there is lines, Plains Road's a truck route.
Yeah.
Well, well, that shouldn't be a huge engineering feat then.
I wouldn't think so.
He said it wouldn't take long.
If it's just a water line.
But it's just a missing component.
Well, no, that's.
We gotta get it in there.
Yeah, we need to find out how much it's gonna cost, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay, and we'll do that.
That's it for old business, and then I guess new business, we'll push to next meeting, so we can see the comparisons.
Yes, and I'll get those.
Policies, so.